Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 2025 oath-giving ceremony. I want to welcome our dignitaries, our families, friends, and of course, our newly-elected members. It's very exciting. So we're gonna, without further ado, we're gonna get started, and I'm going to invite our Scout, Scouting America Troop 60, to present the colors. Now if you'll join them with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I'd like to invite Rabbi Polakoff to come give an invocation for us.
It's an honor to be here as our new first selectman has invited me, a rabbi and lover of Israel, also Southbury's longest-serving resident clergy, to offer tonight's invocation. In so doing, I did not recreate the wheel. We are not so arrogant to presume that the past can't speak to us. The Bible tells us that Joshua, upon his installation as leader, was offered the very same guidance from God, Moses, and the people themselves, all say "chazak ve'amatz", "be strong and of good courage". Why would the exact same thing be said three times? At a basic level, to underscore that leadership invites vexing trials, requiring personal strength and courage, but delving deeper to acknowledge how successfully responding to those tough moments demands an awareness of the mission, the past, and of the actual people being served? That is, so that Joshua might remember the context each time he was told that phrase. The Bible tells us Joshua received from Moses instruction on rules, from the people, a mandate to govern, and from faith, a sense of the cosmic importance of integrity and compassion. Fast forward to 21st century Southbury. As Tim and the Board of Selectmen now assume their own distinct set of responsibilities, we pray they too will embrace their trusts with empathy and resolve. Bespeaking our town's inclusiveness and growth, each elected official sworn in tonight has arrived here on a special path. Notably, for the first time, women constitute a majority of the board. For our new first selectmen, there's a familial bond and a centuries-long ancestral connection to local civic life and to his important office once held by his grandfather. For all, there's a profound link to this place's unique history as well as a desire to advance the welfare of young and old, individuals and families. We know that the tasks before this group of leaders will be demanding. Not every day will be to your liking. At such moments, recall the Bible's guidance, "chazak ve'amatz", and how leadership requires courage and discretion to emanate in every direction. May your time in office be personally fulfilling and characterized by accomplishment, respect, and civility. Chazak ve'amatz. Inspired by a sacred sense of duty and purpose, may this town be led from strength to strength. And let us all say, "Amen."
Thank you, Rabbi. Now I'd like to invite our special, one of our special guests, Attorney General William Towne, to give some remarks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to thank the Boy Scouts for your extraordinary Pledge of Allegiance and presentation of the colors. Let's give the Scouts a round of applause, please. I also want to start by, we're here to celebrate the elected officials and the people that will lead this town, but I want to celebrate the people that make this town work, all of the town workers and volunteers across Southbury who will implement and execute on the vision established by, by these select people. So can we give the town workers and employees a round of applause, please? Thank you, Mike Carrington, for blowing up my phone and making sure that I got here tonight. It was good to see my longtime colleague and probate judge, Dave Labriola, here. We've served together in the House for a number of years. Thank you, Dave, for your continued service. And thank you all for having me here tonight. He's our first selectman, honorably and faithfully, has worked extraordinarily hard in giving himself and... And I know Justin Betty and Ann Arment. So I can't stay for the whole 25, but I wanted to be here and I thought about the message that I wanted to leave with all of you. Seventh year as Attorney General. Yeah. But I go everywhere, everybody's Attorney General. And I know that Southbury is distinctly purple. Right? It goes this way and that way, or Pennsylvania, whatever it is. And so you have spirit tonight, not as Democrats and Republicans, but as neighbors and as friends. And speaking of selectmen here tonight, but I want to thank my Republican friends. And I want to thank everybody who, thank you for making this transition, this peaceful transfer of power, possible, and for modeling for the presidential election. I served with 55 other attorneys generals, 50 states, the territories, and it, I was sure she was gonna win. I was sure. And, and I went around telling everybody that she was gonna win. "No, no, we got this, she's gonna win." And so because I was so confident, I went to South Dakota in October of 2024. Done a little bit of bird hunting, and I wanted to get out there and, and participate in his event, but I really wanted to spend time with my Republican colleagues because I thought we were gonna win. And then I thought they were gonna go nuts. And I wanted to just talk to them, right? And remind them that, that we're in this together, that I'm a husband and a dad with a family, that they have families, that we are first and foremost and always Americans. So I went out there, went to South Dakota, we shot some birds, and point, I was in a pickup truck in the dark of night with three Republican colleagues, one from, he won. We lost. And so I had a lot of time. And, and I had a lot of time to think about the significance of my trip to South Dakota. So I was at a... I, I said, "Yeah." And she said, "Did you have a good trip?" I said, "Yes." She said, "William, you were..." Yes, but I was armed too. And then she said... And... But that's what we're doing here tonight. We're doing our part to hold the union together, to work together, not as Democrats and Republicans and unaffiliateds and third parties, but as residents in the town of Southbury and in the state of Connecticut and the United States of America. And we're very lucky because tonight, we have a good man who's stepping up to be the first selectman of this town, a man who loves our parks and will bring his experience as a property manager, I mean, you know what you're doing, right? At least that's what you said in the campaign, Tim. To, to strengthen our parks and the public amenities that the people and the families of this town deserve. And I know, if you know, Tim, that he's, he's a man that reaches out, wants to shake your hand, wants to spend time with you, wants to hear what's up with you and your family and your life. And that's the kind of person we need right now. And so I'm really proud to be here, to support you and, and this entire new board. And, and it's really special to know that you'll be taking your grandfather's, grandfather's place as first selectman. So I have, I have a couple pieces of advice as I, as I conclude my thoughts. Number one, listen to the women. Just do what they tell you to do and you'll be fine. And the second piece is, you know, get out in the field. Spend some time with people that may not see things the way that, that you do always. Remember that they're your people too, that they're our neighbors and our friends and our family. I know that that is in your heart. I know that's why you ran. And if you follow that every single day and bring everyone together, Southbury will be extraordinarily strong. God bless you and God bless this great town.
Thank you, Attorney General. Okay, now we're gonna get to the oaths. So I am going to move over there for the oaths so that we can see your beautiful faces and not your backs when we swear you in. Okay, when you come up, if you could stand facing me, then you'll be facing our, our camera. So first, we're gonna call up Pomprog Valley Water Authority, and that's Rich Borts. Raise, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Pomprog Valley Water Authority for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God. Okay, now if you could just stop by. After you, after you have your oath, if you'd stop by and see my deputy and my assistant to sign your oath, that'll help us out. Okay, now we're gonna call up the Alternate on Inland Wetlands Commission, Matt Lanell. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to the duty, the law, the duties for the town, the duties of Inland Wetlands Commission Alternate for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Okay. Congratulations. Now we're doing Inland Wetlands Commission. That's Donna Lesh, Jason Hoyt, and Thomas Weldon. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Inland Wetlands Commission for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. We're gonna get a little bottleneck. If I move forward, Betsy, is that okay? Okay. I believe Kat Smith, is she here? Oh, she is here. Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. We're going too fast. We'll get everyone in place. We've got Zoning Board of Appeals, Chris Smutten, Jennifer Wisaki, Lisa Antrim, and Kat, that's it. Who's here? Hello? Hi. We're just gonna wait a second. They're gonna take your picture. Okay, you're ready. Okay, they're ready. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. There's two papers they have to sign. That's why it takes a minute. Okay, now we have Zoning Commission Alternate. Dominic. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Zoning Commission Alternate for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. Okay, now we have Zoning Commission, Andrew Sidhu, Katrina Suisa, and Frank DePerna. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to the law, the duties of Zoning Commission for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. And now Planning Commission Alternate, Stephen Huntley. Hi. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission Alternate for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. Yeah, should do a little karaoke. When we were checking the mics before, we did do a little karaoke. Okay, we're almost there. We have Planning Commission now, Nancy Clark, Roberta Stewart, Robyn Greenspan. And I know Nancy couldn't be here, but she already was sworn in. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Planning Commission for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. Board of Assessment Appeals. We have Diane Barros and Gabby Addison. Is Diane not here? I guess not. All right, okay. All right, so we'll just do Gabby. Okay, you'll do it. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Board of Assessment Appeals for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. And we'll let them clear out. Okay. Board of Finance Alternate, Vivian Templeton. I'm good. Raise your right hand. I do solemn, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Board of Finance Alternate to the best of your abilities to help you, God?
I do.
Congratulations. Okay, now we're up to Board of Finance, and we have Michael Carrington, John Kelly, and Steve Giacomi. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Board of Finance for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. Okay, I'm gonna go backwards just a little bit here, and I'm gonna go back to the Regional Board of Education, to Thomas Marks. Hi, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Board of Education for Region 15, for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations. Okay, now we're to the big guys. Okay, so we're gonna do the Select, the Board of Selectmen now. We're gonna do Kathy DeCarly, Kelly Keenan, Wendy Bernard, Jason Vanstone, and Holly Sullivan. A few pictures while we... Okay, raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of selectmen or select person for the town of Southbury to the best of your abilities to help you, God? Congratulations, everyone. I know we're gonna want a lot of pictures, so we'll let them clear out a little. Are you getting pictures? Oh, there you are. I already karaoke. I could do my stand-up act, too. In another life, that's what I wanted to do. Okay, now we're gonna do our first selectman, Mr. Tim O'Neill. Feel like an encore. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of first selectmen for the town of Southbury to the best of your ability to help you, God? Congratulations. And now I'm gonna invite our first selectman to give a few remarks.
Well, quite a room here. Thank you all for showing up. I'm gonna need these because once I turn 50, I can't see anything. Again, thank you all for coming. I, I just want to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to everyone who voted, to all the supporters of mine, and the incredible volunteers who knocked doors, made phone calls, and spread our message. Thank you to the Democratic Town Committee and to my family, my daughter Kelsey, my son Christopher, and my wife Mary for their unwavering support and understanding and patience. Two years ago, we ran and we lost by nearly 600 votes. Southbury has historically leaned Republican, so this victory is especially meaningful. We didn't have a huge budget to work on. What we did have was dedicated volunteers who believed deeply in our message and our vision for the future of Southbury. This one belongs to all of you. As we begin this journey, I'm committed to addressing the safety concerns of our residents, specifically the state bridle path crossing at Route 6 and Route 188, and the persistent speeding on Burma Road. I also want to improve senior services by expanding senior transportation and ensuring that the senior center is open five days a week with accessible exercise classes. I also look forward to working closely... I also look forward to working closely with the Southbury Ambulance Association to strengthen our emergency services in our community and also addressing the lack of affordable housing. That's a priority. We'll move forward with the plans that the state conveyed of the Southbury Training School, Personnel Village, and I intend to begin a constructive dialogue with state officials about the long-term future of that property and have the state address the dilapidated homes along Route 172 and the farm buildings. Southbury purchased over 200 acres off of Exit 14 over 20 years ago. It's called the Volpe Rosen property. In my opinion, this is key to building the commercial and industrial grand list, either by selling or leasing to mining companies like ONG Industries or Haynes Construction, or by using a portion of that for solar banks. And I plan to explore those options to reduce the tax burden of our residents. I also plan to work closely with Region 15 representatives to resolve concerns surrounding the two elementary schools, Gainfield and Pomprog. And finally, we'll invest in improving our town parks, the parking lots, the landscaping, the lighting, the opening of community park restrooms, and exploring the... the lighting, the opening of community park restrooms, and exploring the use of the Grange Hall so that they're all welcoming spaces for everyone. I do want to thank the outgoing selectmen and women, Justin Betty, Ann Armando, and First Selectman Jeffrey Mandville for the years of service to our community, and their contributions are appreciated. I do pledge to work diligently every single day with our town employees and boards and commissions with integrity and transparency and respect, and to uphold the trust that you have placed in me. I'm elated, I'm humbled, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to represent Southbury, and I look forward to collaborating with these talented, educated, and yes, mainly women, Board of Select Persons. Thank you all again for the extraordinary honor that I have here. I would like to call the organizational meeting of the Southbury Board of Selectmen to order, and I'll make a motion to appoint as Chair Pro Tem Kathy DeCarly. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Wendy, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain.
And one abstention, okay. No discussions? Let's see, there is a resolve that the Southbury Board of Selectmen here appoints Kathy DeCarly as Chair Pro Tem with the same privileges as the First Selectman in his absence. And I believe that is it. We voted on all that. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And we're adjourned.